Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 3rd Planning Commission Work Session. It's a pleasure to have all of you here. Mr. Bowen?
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. Hope you're all well today. We're going to start off our work session today with a presentation on a joint land use study that the city's been involved in for a number of years with the City of Chesapeake, with the Navy, and our project management folks over at Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, including project manager Ben McFarland, who's down at the end of the table. So Ben is going to give us and the Planning Commission a short summary of what's in the joint land use study. And then if you have any questions or want to discuss any of the items in it after that, we'll have some time for discussion. Ben?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. I think this is the first time I've been in this room. I've been working in the region for a long time. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, my name is Ben McFarland, a senior regional planner in the Water Resources Department at the HRPDC. And not the normal or typical department that would be handling a joint land use study. It's kind of an accident, but we're heavily involved in a lot of resiliency work at the regional level. And several years ago, when we first kicked off these studies, this is the second of two that the PDC has been involved in lately. Resiliency was, and it continues to be, a major point of emphasis for those. And so it kind of fell into my lap a little bit. But today, I want to talk to you about the work that we did as part of this joint land use study, give you some background on where it all came from, talk about some of the work that we did, and some of the recommendations that we developed through this study, and then talk a little bit about next steps and how we can take advantage of that study, both locally in the city and also regionally throughout Hampton Roads. So without further ado, I don't know how familiar you all are with the joint land use study process. This is something that's a program that is managed by the Department of Defense Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation. Used to be Office of Economic Adjustment. You may be familiar with that term. They recently changed their name. They decided to make it a little bit longer. But the key takeaway from this is that the DOD has recognized the importance of defense communities, of their ability to effectively plan to deal with all the challenges that come with having a military installation within your boundaries. No, Portsmouth, you all have quite a number of installations. You all have quite the set of challenges when it comes to dealing not only with the military, but also with other entities that are not under your local control. And so having some resources from the DOD to help you all work through those issues, to provide some resources so that you all can have a better working relationship with the military, and it's not just a burden that's put on the city. That's where this office comes from, where this program comes from. And so the way this process works, it's a joint land use study. It's a specific program. It's managed by the DOD. You are nominated by a military installation. So in this case, the study was nominated by Navy Region Mid-Atlantic, which is headquartered out of Naval Station Norfolk. And then OLDCC, they look at the application, they come down. One of the nice things about this program is it's not really competitive. Some of the other grants, you may be involved in at a city level where you're actually, you're applying for something, and you get scored and ranked, and you may or may not win. In this case, you know, it's not quite a shoo-in, but it is definitely like if the Navy thinks it's important and OLDCC comes down and thinks that it's worthwhile, they will work with the community to make sure that this actually happens and it takes place. And so it works out. I think it's a pretty good process to really prioritize assets based on need and not necessarily on who can put together the best application. So from our perspective at the PDC, this does, you know, it has a lot of benefits for us. It really does bring together the communities and the installations to have conversations that may not take place otherwise without those resources there, without that opportunity there. It's a special process. You know, for those of you that have had some experience with the Department of Defense, with the military, kind of a regimented organization. They like their process. And so for us, we can fit in, we have a square peg and a square hole. We're not trying to do a square peg and a round hole with this. And so they're more at ease with that kind of a program. They understand it better. And so it really opens the door for us to have those kind of conversations. And then, you know, what the outcome for these studies is, is really, it gives you more resources potentially to do additional work, follow-on work, but it also helps to build and maintain relationships that can have longstanding benefits, not only for the military, but also for the community. So for our study here, the Portsmouth-Chesapeake Joint Land Use Study, we worked with a number of partners. Bob mentioned the two cities of Portsmouth and Chesapeake were the key localities there. On the installation side, we worked with the Naval Shipyard, with Naval Medical Center Portsmouth, Naval Station Norfolk, which actually has, you know, control over some of the other facilities in the city of Portsmouth, and then also Naval Support Activity Hampton Roads, which does as well. So those two are, you know, obviously they're located over in Norfolk, but some of those ancillary facilities here on the western side of the Elizabeth River fall under them. And then on the consultant side, we had a team led by AECom. And then the PDC, we were acting as the sponsor, the non-federal sponsor for the project. So went through, you know, we had extensive conversations with stakeholders at the very, very beginning of this, interviewed for, what, three, I think, three weeks or so of interviews with folks from both cities, with folks on the Navy side, on the civilian side, to get a handle on, you know, exactly what were the issues that we should be trying to address in the study. We had a pretty good idea when we were putting together the application, but it's incredibly important for us to go in and get that sort of validation to make sure that we're on the right track. And in this case, we identified six key issues: parking, mobility, roadway flooding, access to installations, redevelopment and economic development, and then coordination and communication. So one of the things, you know, that we do as part of these studies, we do a lot of analysis. You know, we were given pretty extensive resources by the Department of Defense. We want to take advantage of that work to really do the kind of analysis that can help inform decision-making at the local and regional level. And in this case, we really took advantage of some of the work that we've been doing ongoing in the region related to resiliency, related to flooding, some of the work that the city's been doing as well. You know, we were able to dovetail the work that we were doing with the joint land use study with some of the work that the city's doing with Arcadis on your resiliency efforts to really maximize, you know, the crosstalk between these projects and make sure that we weren't going down one direction with the joint land use study and in another direction with what the localities are already doing. In this case, you know, flooding is obviously, it's a major concern for our region. It's a major concern for the military installations when they're talking about getting people to and from those installations. And so we were able to look at the work that we've been doing regionally when it comes to sea-level rise planning and look at also the work that's been going on with internal to both cities here to look at the amount of stormwater flooding that's been happening and get a much better sense of kind of how those two forces are working together to make our flooding situation just a little bit more worse, right? It's not just about tidal flooding. The stormwater system has a major, you know, role in figuring out how we're actually, not only how vulnerable we are, but actually how we can address that flooding. And if we don't have that kind of analysis, it really does kind of hamper our ability to do good planning and response. So that was something that we did that was unique to this study or new for this. And then looking at that in the context of transportation, taking our regional travel demand model that the transportation planning organizations involved in, factoring in flooding in that, see how not only, you know, how do people right now get to those bases and those installations? How do they move through the city to get to those installations? But how will flooding have an impact on their ability to get to and from? And so this is a lot of work. I mean, this is, can get really in the weeds with this, and you know, it's exciting stuff for us that we're going to be able to take advantage of this and apply this to a lot of the regional planning work that's going on that the city staff is also involved in. So once we were able to get through the, kind of the analysis phase, we'd identified our issues, we came together with our technical committee, with the policy committee, and kind of honed down, took those issues to identify a set of goals that we wanted to achieve with the recommendations that we were going to be developing. And those goals are listed here. We wanted to mitigate flooding impacts to the transportation network, strengthen installation resilience, maintain and expand access to the installations in the two cities, enhance the neighborhoods that surround those installations, take advantage of opportunities to redevelop and reuse land that is currently owned by the Department of Defense or adjacent to those installations that may be underutilized right now, adopt policies and programs that will help to manage some of these issues that we've identified, help hopefully prevent future conflicts from arising. And then, again, strengthen relationships between the Navy and localities. This is something I can't emphasize enough how important it is to build and then to maintain these networks of relationships, especially on the military side when there's such turnover at the staff level and especially at the uniform level, that having a process in place where you are constantly meeting the new people that are coming in, they are getting brought up to speed, that that can really pay dividends for effective coordination between the city and the military. So on the actions, we had two different types of recommendations that we developed as part of the study. One were a set of actions. These are, I guess, kind of like specific projects or studies or follow-on work that could lead to projects in these different categories. We also had a set of policies and programs that we recommended as well. So in terms of the actions, we had six categories: parking, multimodal access, this probably sounds familiar compared to the issues that we identified earlier, land use and development, flood mitigation, and then utility work. I'll go through some examples here, but one of the things that we did with the study was try to prioritize. We weren't prioritizing in the sense of saying that this is the project that should be done first. We were prioritizing in the sense that we were trying to assess and estimate what the highest benefit project would be. So when we show, when I show the, up here in a minute, the slides that show the Tier One, Tier Two, please do not think that that's like the order in which they should be done. But these were the evaluation criteria that we used with our, we selected in concert with the technical committee, which had staff from both the military installations and from both cities, and also from the region, from the TPO side things. Personnel and mission readiness for the DOD, network connectivity on the transportation side, community benefits, and then economic resilience. So these are the four categories, and then we had several criteria that were within each of those categories. And we considered many different candidate recommendations or actions. Each of those candidate projects or recommendations was scored by everyone on the technical committee. If it was a local project, locality staff took the lead on producing those initial scores. We came together as a technical committee to vet those scores and to kind of wiggle them here or there. And then, once that was done, produced a final ranking of what those, the recommended actions would be. And so here's, this is the Tier One. We broke them into four different tiers. So the first tier, these are the highest benefit projects that we identified, and they're what we call comprehensive flood mitigation and stormwater management strategies for several corridors in the city and also extending in Chesapeake. So Effingham Street, George Washington Highway, Victory Boulevard, and Portsmouth Boulevard. These were all corridors that were identified as absolutely crucial to the military being able to get to and from in installations, but also for the importance that these corridors have in the economic vitality of the two cities. Getting a handle on not just how much, how at risk those corridors are to flooding, but also to what types of strategies may actually work to address that flood risk. That's what we're talking about here. So we recognized early on that it's not as simple as raising a road most of the time. Sometimes, you know, depending on the immediate context of some of these corridors, you may have extensive neighborhood development, you may have other infrastructure issues going on there. And so when we say a comprehensive flood mitigation and stormwater management strategy, what we really mean is we need to take a deep dive into all the different situations and conditions that are surrounding these corridors to make sure that whatever recommendations come out of those studies, that it's the right thing, not just for the access, for the connectivity, but it's the right thing for the community as a whole. With the Tier Two actions, we had a couple more of these flood mitigation and stormwater management strategies, one on Frederick, and then one on Cedar Lane, and then getting into some other potential items. So things like looking, working with HRST, or excuse me, HRT, to improve access for public transit, to make sure that it is actually serving the installations at the times, that the installations would actually need that service to be in place. And then looking at some possible opportunities for economic development surrounding the South Gate Annex and the St. Julian's Creek Annex down in Chesapeake. So those, this idea of using the Enhanced Use Lease Program with the DOD is something that we've gotten a lot of positive feedback on from both the localities, and that's also some willingness from the Navy to have those conversations about how localities could take advantage of that underutilized land. And then some additional ones, looking at things like bicycle routes, parking situations, trying to get a better handle on the parking situation, you know, around the shipyard, like how can they take better advantage of some of the land that they have access to already without being such a burden on the neighborhoods that immediately surround the shipyard, both actually on the main shipyard site, but also at some of their ancillary facilities as well. And then just a few more of these Tier Three actions, things like, you know, improving parking, looking at vulnerability of public infrastructure to flooding, to sea-level rise, you know, having some more economic development coordination between the localities and with the Navy as a partner there. And then I think we got some more. Yeah, so just an additional, more studies, looking at flood risk vulnerability, looking at public infrastructure, and then again, another economic development item here, looking at the Paradise Creek landfill reuse, doing a feasibility study there. So there's a number of, you know, items that we looked at throughout the study. I want to say that when it comes to some of these economic development ideas, that I think, getting a little bit ahead of myself, but in terms of thinking about where we might go next with some of this work, that because it's included in a joint land use study, it becomes eligible for additional follow-on funding for implementation. And so if there are particular ideas that the Commission or city staff are interested in following through on, that this is a great opportunity to take advantage of these resources. But just as I mentioned before, just to reiterate, we also looked at policies and practices. These are things like just having MOUs in place to talk about some of these land use conflicts potentially, or talk about stormwater management planning, things like advocating for changes in state law, working together to share GIS data. Those are the kinds of things that we consider when it comes to these policies and practices. One of the kind of exciting things that we were able to take advantage of, you know, obviously you all are more than aware of the challenges that we've been under for the last couple of years when it comes to COVID and the pandemic and the restrictions that's been able, that's placed on not just, you know, what we've been doing day-to-day, but certainly on the business of government. And then previously, when we've done studies like this, we've kind of adopted the typical model of having in-person public meetings. I'll have a few of those throughout the process, you know, beginning to introduce the public to those meetings, to the project. And then, once we start to kind of come up with ideas of what we're doing, we'll have another one, and then a follow-on, an end meeting as well to kind of present the final plan. And in this case, you know, we really couldn't do that. We couldn't have our in-person meetings like we are used to doing. And so it kind of forced us to take a step back and think, how would we, how do we do this now? What model do we have? And we were able to take advantage of some work that our contractor, AECom, had done with some previous projects they'd been involved in, to develop a virtual room that we're able to kind of set up online. It's still there. You can go in and work around and just kind of walk through the room as you normally would if you're, you know, in a conference room or something like that. It has posters set up, it has information, it links to all the different products that we've developed as part of this project, including some of the previous presentations we've done. And then to supplement this, we actually did a live, online, public meeting. And I think it probably comes no surprise to any of you that participation numbers were actually a lot higher when we had them online than when they have been in person. I don't know what that says about my ability to coordinate an in-person public meeting, but I know we were really excited that we were able to get so many people to actually show up, even if it's just online, and ask questions and put things in the chat and be, participate in the process and be, you know, a part of that conversation. We thought it was a really good model and something that, you know, at the PDC that we're excited about trying to take advantage of and to use that for future work, not just for, as a one-off that we did because of COVID, that we see a lot of benefit in using that model for additional work down the line. So, you know, I mentioned that there are some additional resources that are out there that are potentially available to the cities to follow on from this project. Right now, we are in the process of doing presentations like this, briefing our partners on the local and also on the Navy side. We're having initial conversations with the cities about possible implementation grant opportunities. And then we're also having some larger conversations at the regional level about how do we not just apply for implementation grants, but how do we really take advantage of the study here and also the one that we managed for Norfolk and Virginia Beach, to really kind of use that as a launching point for having a better overall conversation and ongoing relationship with the Navy on the south side? I think there's a lot of excitement on our end there to really use this as a launching point. So that's all I have for today. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Sure. Mr. McFarland, let me first of all thank you for the excellent presentation. It was extremely enlightening. Commissioners, are there any additional questions of Mr. McFarland? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowen?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. First of all, again, I'd like to thank Ben for all his time and effort on this project. I don't know, Ben probably has a better idea for it. I think we've been dealing with this for probably five years, maybe, since we had the first notion to do, to do the project. We were also, at the time, when they're doing the Norfolk and Virginia Beach one, they were trying to debate which one would go first. And we went second. We actually, to our advantage, a lot of things, they learned about sea level rise and climate change doing their first one. We were able to take advantage of it for the second study. But there's been a very lengthy process, been a lot of effort and work put into it. I will mention, we've already got a couple of grant applications the city is submitting that have, that come out of the recommendations of this plant for some flood projects. We're already beginning to see some values, some positives out of having this work effort done, and we're just at the very beginning of implementation. As Ben mentioned, there's going to be an implementation group put together for all four cities involved in it. So we're hopeful to get a lot more implementation of the recommendations as we move forward.
Thank you. One question, is there any community involvement in this?
Yes, there was a great deal, as Ben was telling. There was a great deal of community involvement all through the process. That was one of the more challenging aspects of the project from all of our standpoints because trying to capture all the military installations in Portsmouth, the community is not like your normal, like we're in a neighborhood, we're in Parkview or Craddock or something. This is, you know, we're around Craddock down there with the shipyard, but we're also over in Chesapeake with St. Julian's Creek. We're also being around the Navy Medical Center. We had engagement with the folks up around Parkview and Port Norfolk and all that part of Old Town. A lot of people were interested up there. And some up in Churchland, actually, because we had the Cranny Island Fuel Depot is also part of this effort. And even though there aren't a lot of people who live right around that, there was an opportunity for engagement. They were, there was reach out to all those communities multiple times during the process for engagement. And that'll be a continuing part of the process for us. We always like to engage the communities as projects are done and as implementation efforts move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Goldman?
Yeah, I just have one question. As far as the grants, does the Planning Commission, I mean, not the Planning Commission, the planning staff, or does the city have someone that will work on the grants, or is it department basis?
Right now, the primary work being done on the grants is running through engineering, through James Wright, but it's a group effort. There's a committee of, we'll call internal departmental stakeholders that have interests or responsibilities in these areas, and so they're all collaborating. We're also using city consultants that are part of the engineering on-call consulting services to assist in the grant applications as well.
Again, thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Ready to move forward?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Well, we're going to start with our first planning mission, but before we do that, I have an announcement, may already be aware of this, but today is Stacy Porter's last appearance before the Planning Commission. She is moving, but not too far. She's moving down from the fourth floor to the third floor of City Hall. She's accepted a position with the Department of Parks and Recreation, and so we're going to let Stacy say a few words before she gets to the actual application at hand. She comes up to talk about use permit 22-07. She actually could have left the department early, but she wanted to stay on for one more meeting with the Planning Commission, and we are grateful for that.
Good afternoon, one last time.
Good afternoon.
This is kind of hard. It really is. It's been a long, long time. Donna was actually a coworker of mine years ago in planning, and I really enjoyed having you as a coworker, but you all have been wonderful, wonderful commission, and I'm sure I'll see you at something. I'm going to be working with special events with the city. I'll be a permit slash event coordinator with Parks and Recreation, and I'll work underneath the events manager there. And I've been given some assignments already. I'm excited. I've really partied them to death. They're tired of parties, so they're kicking me out. That's really what it is. But thank you all for everything. Y'all have been friends, I think, not just colleagues.
Well, we have been, Stacy, and want to thank you for your professionalism.
Thank you.
And the great service you have given to this department.
Thanks.
And we wish you the absolute best. And we're always here if you need us.
Thank you.
But we don't want to work too hard.
No, 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 no. That's right. That's right. I'll tell you, but thank you all for listening to this one last presentation. All right. And this is for our use permit UP 2207, Churchland. Dominique Neely requests a use permit for an event space, Banquit Hall, at 5760 Churchland Boulevard. The property is a general mixed-use GMU and is further described as tax map 808 parcel one. Okay. And again, good afternoon. I'm Stacy Porter. Today, I'm representing the Planning Department and will provide an overview of the applicant's request. The applicant's proposed business will be known as The Black Room, and as I earlier mentioned, it will be located in that Churchland Shopping Center. The property is owned GMU. The property is approximately 16 acres in size and was constructed in 1956. The property contains a variety of commercial and retail establishments. In the next slides, or a couple of slides, I'll provide an overview of that surrounding area and land uses and zoning. To the north is residential single-family development within the Belvedere subdivision, as well as along West Norfolk Road. The zoning is general residential GR. The nearest single-family home is approximately 300 feet from the applicant's facility. The proposed facility is surrounded to the east, south, and west by a variety of establishments, including a medical facility, restaurants, retail establishments, and a grocery store. This slide shows the business location at the northwest corner of the Churchland Shopping Center. There are over 500 shared vehicle parking spaces available for the tenants and customers within the shopping center. The applicant's proposed establishment will host a variety of events, which include birthday and retirement celebrations, conferences, holiday functions, gender reveals, and family reunions, and will operate daily from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight. Alcohol will also be permitted, provided clients obtain an ABC license for each hosted event. The next few slides that I'll be showing will show the interior renovations the applicant has performed to the leased commercial space. According to the submitted floor plan, the facility is approximately 3,600 square feet in size. The facility will provide clients approximately 2,500 square feet of open space for their proposed events. This first slide shows the interior renovations to the front portion of the facility. Here in this slide, the applicant shows their renovations to allow for a storage area, restrooms, and a kitchenette. This slide offers an additional view of the open event space. As noted in the staff report, an interior side door leads to a 3,000-square-foot fenced grass area immediately adjacent to the applicant's commercial space, and I'll show it here. The applicant has informed staff that this area will be used for a smoking area, as no smoking will be allowed within the facility. There you go. So sorry. There it is. All right. All right, here we go. Staff finds the proposal complies with the goals and recommendations of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan, as the proposed use complies with the property's district character area designation and would provide potential job opportunities which would strengthen the local economy. The proposed establishment is located on an end unit of the Churchland Shopping Center and is approximately 300 feet from the nearest residential property to the north. Provided all events remain internal to the structure and the facility remains in compliance with the U.S. Specific Standards for Entertainment Establishments, staff recommends the approval of the applicant's request, and that does conclude the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Porter? There appear to be none. Thank you.
Okay. President Planner Julie Chop will provide the next presentation. Principal Planner Julie Chop will provide the next presentation on UP 22-08.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. This is Julie Chop, Principal Planner with the City of Portsmouth. This use permit application involves the property at 2115 High Street. The approximately .318-acre property is in the neighborhood mixed-use zoning district and innovation overlay district. The property contains a one-story, approximately 3,571-square-foot L-shaped block and brick building fronting on High Street. The property was granted a use permit in '27 to operate a child daycare center, and more recently was used as a music school. A religious institution-zoned NMU is located to the east of the subject site. South of the property, across King Street, is another religious institution that is also zoned NMU. West of the site is the on-ramp to the Martin Luther King Jr. Freeway, and to the north is vacant property that is zoned NMU. Further north are residential properties that are zoned NMU. The proposal for the property at 2115 High Street will be titled Royal Elite Enterprises LLC. The applicant plans to operate multiple uses within the existing building, including an event space banquet hall, music and media production studio, apparel and merchandise design studio, and vape and hookah lounge. The event space banquet hall use requires a use permit to operate while the remaining uses are permitted without a use permit. The applicant plans to lease the event space to host birthday parties, baby showers, artist showcases, et cetera. Events that are booked at this location may include live entertainment, DJs, and may obtain a single-event ABC license. The establishment will be open Monday through Sunday. The proposed hours of operation for Monday through Thursday are 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday, the proposed hours of operation are 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., and Sunday from noon to midnight. Rental of the event space will be available from Friday through Sunday between the hours of 8:00 p.m. and 1:00 a.m. The applicant approximates hiring five to seven employees to staff the establishment. The applicant plans to paint the exterior of the building, place a new sign on the front facade, and paint a mural on the side of the building. The conceptual site plan submitted with the applicant, with the application depicts vehicular access to the site off of High Street and King Street, and includes at least 24 off-street parking spaces in the rear of the site. The property is designated on the future land use map of the Comprehensive Plan as a mixed-use corridor. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's use permit request with the recommended, recommended conditions listed in the staff report. With the recommended conditions, the proposed use is consistent with the recommendations of the city's Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan and is appropriate in this location. To my knowledge, no public comments were received regarding this application. And this concludes my presentation, and I will now stand by for questions from the planning commission.
Thank you, Ms. Chop. Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Chop? There appear to be none. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission, we'll go to our third and final public hearing item for today, that's Z 22-01, and Julie also has that presentation.
The rezoning application before you today is a request to rezone an approximately 1.45-acre property located at 1300 High Street. The property is currently zoned neighborhood mixed-use and is in the innovation overlay district. The site is located along High Street in between Godwin Street and Armstrong Street. The property contains an existing 18,584-square-foot block structure. The property is the current location of a used vehicle sales, repair, and servicing facility. The existing building includes a glass showroom, a service area with five bays, and a paved lot for parking and for outdoor display of vehicles. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property to the industrial zoning district with conditions in order to use the existing building to grow, cultivate, and produce industrial hemp extract and CBD oil. North of the property at 1300 High Street is a large commercial building zoned general mixed-use. To the west is a religious institution that is zoned NMU. Further west, across Godwin Street, is vacant land, also zoned NMU. The parcel to the east of the, the site, across Armstrong Street, is zoned NMU and is largely asphalt and vacant of structures. Beyond this vacant parcel are commercial properties that are zoned NMU. South of the subject property, across High Street, is a commercial vehicle sales use that is also zoned NMU. The applicant, Green Relief, is an industrial hemp grower licensed by the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. The applicant seeks to rezone the property from NMU to IN in order to utilize the existing building as an urban agriculture and manufacturing facility to grow and cultivate industrial hemp and produce industrial hemp extract and CBD oil. The operation will utilize advanced hydroponic cultivation techniques and will ensure the hemp grown is at or below the state-prescribed THC levels. The processed hemp extract and CBD oil will be transported off-site for the manufacture of topical lotions, creams, gels, and products intended for human consumption. The project narrative states that the facility will operate from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday. Scheduled pickups will occur during normal business hours, and no large trucks or 18-wheelers will be used to transport products on or off-site. The facility approximates hiring four full-time and six part-time employees to operate the The applicant plans to close four of the five existing service bays with the bay closest to Armstrong Street to remain open for the transport of harvested materials in three-fourth-ton vans from the property approximately four times per year. The applicant proposes to remodel the front facade of the existing structure with wood, brick, storefront glass, and hardy plank siding. A security system will be installed and operated that provides perimeter access control and monitoring for entry and exit, to include card readers, an intercom system, request-to-exit devices, door contact, and electric lock interface, as well as CCTV cameras. The zoning administrator determined that the most appropriate use classification for the proposed use at 1300 High Street is heavy manufacturing, due to the extraction and processing of raw agricultural materials. Heavy manufacturing is not permitted in the current NMU zoning of the property. Therefore, an approved rezoning to the IN zoning district is necessary in order to operate the proposed use on the property. Land use restrictions are very important for this site because of the surrounding religious institution and commercial uses. It is important that these adjacent uses be protected from potential industrial use externalities such as noise, odors, glare, vibration, and pollution. The applicant submitted a proffer letter as part of the rezoning application that includes a list of prohibited land uses that would typically be permitted in the IN zoning district, which provides land use protection in the event that the proposed development does not materialize. The proffers also conditioned the removal of the existing parking lot lights, building signage, and freestanding signs near Armstrong Street. The conditions mandate the improvement of the existing building facade with neutral-colored brick, storefront glass, wood, and hardy plank cement siding. The property is designated on the future land use map of the Comprehensive Plan for commercial use. Staff recommends approval of the conditional zoning request for 1300 High Street. The voluntary proffers adequately safeguard the property from inappropriate future development. With the proffers, the proposed rezoning would provide for the use of the property in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding areas. No comments, to my knowledge, have been received regarding this application. And this concludes my presentation, and I will now stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Chop. Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Chop? And I have one, and it may be a better question for the applicant. Define for me industrial hemp.
I think that would be a good question for the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks. I guess I could have done this after.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I don't have any specific items for the update today, other than to make a note that this application, you just had the presentation of the industrial hemp, as well as, you know, future applications we may see regarding cannabis or whatever else the General Assembly ultimately does with that legislation will require us to modify the zoning ordinance. We just don't know what to do with it at this point until we get further legislation adopted and guidance from the state. So I think that's one of the reasons you saw, you know, us working through this application in the manner in which it was done.
Sure. Thank you. Is there any further for the...
No, sir, that's all we have.
Commissioners, it's now 1:14. We will commence our regular session at 1:30, and I ask that you be seated. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, May 3rd, being held in the City Council Chamber. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I will now confirm that all members of the planning commission are present backhauling the role. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Present.
Commissioner Coleman?
Here.
Commissioner Page?
Present.
Commissioner Barnes?
Here.
Commissioner Curry?
Present.
Commissioner Hines. Six members of the planning commission are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the April 5th, 2022, public hearing, if there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Page. I make a motion for the approval of the minutes.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the April 5th Planning Commission. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
The, the minutes are approved by a vote of six to zero.
Before we proceed, Madam Secretary, Commissioners, we need to change the order of the agenda for today. We need to move item number three to number one, number one to two, and number two to three. The chair's in need of a motion.
I move to move the item Z 22-01 to item number one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
The agenda will be changed to Z 2201 as our first item, and will be followed by UP 2207 and UP 2208.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We can now proceed.
Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, June the 7th, 2022, at 12:30 p.m. City Council Chamber, followed by public hearing at 1:30 p.m. City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their May the 24th, 2022, public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time, if you have not already done so. Our first item, UP-22-01. Z, and I meant Z, I said UP, but Z-22-01 Uptown, Green Relief LLC, request to rezone an approximately 1.45-acre property located at 1300 High Street from neighborhood mixed-use NMU to conditional industrial INK in order to utilize the property and existing building as an urban agriculture and manufacturing facility to grow and cultivate industrial hemp and to produce industrial hemp extract and CBD oil. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for commercial use. The property is owned by Cars Four Less Inc. and is identified as Tax Map 38, parcel 133. The staff coordinator is Julie Chop. Will the applicant or representative for this application, please come forward and present your application at this time.
Hi, good afternoon, Chairman Williams, Vice Chair Thaxton, members of the planning commission, and staff. For the record, my name is Lisa Murphy. I'm the local attorney with Wilcox Savage here tonight, or today, sorry, on behalf of the applicant, Green Relief. Julie did an excellent job of explaining the application for you, so I'll just hit on some of the high points. As was indicated, the applicant is an industrial hemp grower licensed by the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, and they seek to rezone the property from NMU to conditional industrial. To answer Chairman Williams' question, industrial hemp is the hemp plant without the THC, which is the component of marijuana that gets people high. So it's the plant without the marijuana component. And that is, in fact, the industrial hemp is what's used today in so many products that you see advertised all over the internet, all over town, CBD oil, CBD this, CBD supplements. There's a CBD oil that I give my dog, that I put on her food because she's got horrible arthritis. So the industrial hemp and having the ability not only to grow it, but to process it and manufacture it, and to create the extract or the CBD cannabinoid oil, CBD oil, to be utilized in the manufacture of topical lotions, creams, and gels, and products for human consumption, that's really what we're talking about here, as the staff report indicates. You know, this is an innovative use, which is very appropriate for this innovation district. When we approached staff and economic development about reusing this, this now vacant building, which was originally a Cadillac dealership, and then it was a used car dealership, they said, hmm, that doesn't really kind of fit into what we have. We have urban agriculture, which you can do there by right, but if you want to go ahead and take that plant and process it and turn it into the oils and, and the other products, well, then that's manufacturing, and you have to go the industrial route. So that's how we ended up with the industrial rezoning classification, conditional industrial. As you'll see from looking at the proffers, we've proffered out all of the things that you would normally consider intense industrial-type uses. From an operational standpoint, the operations, as was indicated, Julie said earlier, and it's in the staff report, we're only talking about harvesting this relatively small product four times a year, which means you're really only going to have activity with the three-quarter-ton trucks coming and going just four times a year at harvest time. So you're not going to have constant, no 18-wheelers, no large trucks, and there's certainly not going to be the constant type of activity that you would have with what you would normally think of as an industrial manufacturing facility. So this is a very, very low-intensity use, but again, we're kind of pigeonholed. We had to go for that industrial classification in order to be able to do the production and the manufacturing component, which I understand applies even to bakeries and, and to that type of use. So again, it's a relatively low-intense and passive use. The, the facade of the building, as is indicated in the proffer, and Julie touched on this a little bit, in order to soften the appearance, it's going to be the neutral-colored brick, the storefront... the storefront glass, and wood. There's also a treatment, and I don't think we have a slide for it, but it's a, it looks like a green fence-type treatment that'll be put on the outside, so it'll look like green relief, which is what it is. The signs, the existing signs will be taken down, the building signage will be taken down, there'll be one sign. Those existing car dealership lights are going to be taken down. So really, it'll refocus the use and make it much more neighborhood-friendly than the type of use that you have there now. The parking will remain, and the church that's adjacent will continue to use that parking for their overflow parking. As I mentioned, the existing building and exterior signage will be taken down. Hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, Saturday through Sunday. But again, you're not going to have a lot of people coming and going. You'll have four to six employees on site. The hope is, because this is in the Innovation District, the hope is that in the future, they'll be able to bring people in, to train them as growers, or to bring in students to show them how to grow either hydroponics or just how to grow an urban garden. So there's potentially an educational component as well. The applicant intends to utilize the best technology and facility designs to simplify and streamline the industrial hemp-growing process. The best hydroponic design consists of applying today's advanced indoor-growing systems to increase sustainable production of the plant. What these have is a hydroponic drip system that's just in time, so they'll, the plants get water just as they need it. Then the plants are dried, and they're processed, as I said, harvested and processed four times a year. The product, because it is the industrial hemp, it's regulated both by the state and the federal government, you have constant testing of the product to make sure that it's industrial hemp and not anything else. So that's very much controlled. The protocols that our applicant will put into place will produce a level of quality that's going to be far superior to the industry standards. Consistent with the applicant's commitment to keep its employees and products safe, Julie touched on this a little bit, there will actually be a security system in place, installed and operated, that provides perimeter access control and monitoring for entry and exit, including card readers, intercom system, CCTVs, and the like, to make sure they maintain that strict security throughout the building. The interior modifications, again, that will be required, will be done in a green manner. I didn't mention the, we talked a little bit about the hydroponics and the drip system for the plants. The storm drain systems will incorporate either bioswells or another type of filtration, so they can actually reuse the rainwater to, for the hydroponics for the plant. So it's meant to be a green system all the way around. The modifications to the building interior and the new equipment purchases and the proposed facade improvements will all result in a $1.2 million investment in the city of Portsmouth in downtown. And the business itself, as I mentioned and as Julie mentioned, will employ four to six, four full-time and six part-time employees. The subject property is part of the High Street Corridor Innovation District, and the purpose of the district is to really regenerate an underperforming area into a desirable location for innovative and creative companies and workers in order to stimulate innovation while driving economic development. Well, I can't think of a better use or reuse for this particular building than this innovative, new and innovative technology and use. In addition to making a considerable investment in the community, the proposed use, as I said, will create new jobs. Once the business is fully operational, the applicant, as I indicated, plans to offer tours, seminars, other educational opportunities for the community to see the benefits of hydroponic farming, as well as provide opportunities for the community to plant vegetative beds and gardens and onsite mobile planters. In total, the innovative reuse of this existing building is exactly the type of economic development activity the Comprehensive Plan calls for in this part of the city. As I mentioned, even though this is conditional industrial, we've essentially proffered out all of the potential uses that you would think of as heavy industrial uses. So it really can only be used for this particular quasi-industrial use, so it will have a very limited impact on its neighbors and the surrounding areas. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. As Julie has indicated, the staff supports this. We respectfully request that you recommend approval of this to the City Council, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Murphy. Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Murphy?
I do. Please.
Sure.
Will there be any odors that the community will be able to smell from this building at all?
No, I can, I can address the operations a little bit, and then I can have Mr. Thorwart, who's actually going to be in charge of the operations, come and speak to you. But it's all internal, so they're growing the plants indoors, and then they dry them indoors, so there won't be any smells that are creative, created from the drying process. It's a natural drying process.
Okay. And what happens to the waste?
Well, Mr. Thorwart was just telling me, the product that's not used in the CBD oils and those types of applications, they actually take the pulp that's left over, and they can sell that to paper plants and other types of users. So there really isn't any waste from the product itself, from the plant itself.
Okay. And one more question, please. There won't be any excessive noises coming from this building as a...
No, no, it's not manufacturing in that sense of manufacturing. It's very, very, very small scale. If you've ever seen one of these plants, it's very small scale.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. That's it.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions?
Yes. To go back to the waste portion, so in the growing process, the plant obviously has THC in it. When the extraction happens, is that saying that the THC will no longer be...
So by law, it's, it can have no more than 0.3%. So there's very little to none, and that's what they're going to test for constantly. So as long as it stays within that range, it's industrial hemp, industrial hemp. So there wouldn't, wouldn't be a byproduct like marijuana, like I think what you're thinking of for the high THC products.
Awesome.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions?
Yes, I do. When you say regarding the, for the stormwater in the building, you said it's going to be bioswells or another type of filtration. What would the other type be? Can you give an example?
Well, since they're not actually going to redevelop the property, you know, they're not going to tear up everything that's there now, they'll have to find ways to actually collect the rainwater and the stormwater and to reuse it. So if it's not a bioswell, it could be the rain buckets, but they'll, the intent is to gather up that water. Sean, did you want to, yeah. If I could bring up Mr. Thorwart.
My name is Sean Thorwart. How are you today?
I'm well.
So we're looking to resecure all the rainwater that comes off the building and use that. It's going to basically be a clear, clean water that comes off. We have a filtration system that's going to gather it and then repurpose it inside the building. The effect to noise, the only thing that's going to be noise-producing is going to be the air conditioners on the roof will bring in fresh air. It's a carbon filter system that recirculates it back out, so the neighborhood, nobody's going to, will smell what's going on there. So we're not going to put, you know, a pungent smell out. Mr. Page, it's yours. The plant we're going to produce does not produce any THC, you know, it's going to stay below the .9. So at no time are we going to be, you know, selling THC or have weed coming out of the building that's going to get anybody high. It's a CBD plant that's, the goal is to produce as much CBD as we can to provide a more powerful lotion and ointments and things of that nature. Has quite, you know, quite a few medical benefits to it. In regards to it being a green building, we also have a solar plan to go on the roof to cut down on the, you know, the footprint, as far as how much electricity we're going to be drawing in. And the entire project is set up to be LED, so it should be very minimal as far as what we've got and what we're going to produce.
Commissioners, any additional questions? So, so that I clearly understand, so none of the water will go into the stormwater drain?
We are going to reuse all the storm...
Right. So it won't be in the stormwater drain?
Correct, off the building.
Off the building.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any additional questions? Thank you both.
Thank you.
I do, I do have one.
All right, there is one additional...
No, I'm okay, I'm okay. You can, you guys can sit down. This might be for Mr. Baldwin. I just had a question. The applicant and Ms. Chopp had indicated that this was the use that the city has now with this. Is the city going to look at perhaps classifying this in another category, or is what we have here going to be consistent with what may come in the future?
And that's what I was indicating earlier, interesting question. So we are taking a look at our industrial zone districts. We did a little bit of a work on it back in the most recent update, trying to make sure that our light industrial and heavy industrial are clearly differentiated. We are getting some additional types of uses in here. We think we might need some additional differentiation. We haven't decided yet, haven't done enough work on it yet, quite frankly, to determine how that might be done. I don't think that would affect this property at all, but you may see down the road some alternative type of a light industrial type of a district, so we can, you know, not have to go through a process of eliminating all the heavy industrial uses because of some sort of processing going on. And that is also a little bit of a conversation we have with the Commissioner of Revenue's Office, sometimes how we, in the zoning ordinance, classify industrial uses compared to how they're classified for taxing purposes. So that's also an ongoing conversation as well. So I'd say at some point in the future, I'm not going to say anytime in the, you know, near future, but in the future, we would anticipate some modifications to the industrial districts.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-2201. I have no registered speakers. If there's someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, the chair is now in need of a motion for Z-2201 with conditions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Z-2201 with conditions.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Commissioners, is there a second? The motion dies for lack of a second. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to move on to our next item.
Do we need to make a motion to deny?
Hold on a minute. Let me make sure we got legal here. He's talking to Jeff. Because the last time somebody made a different motion, made a different motion.
We're going to provide some advice in this situation, Mr. Chairman. Considering the fact that the motion to approve failed, based on the advice from the City Attorney's Office, we would need the Planning Commission to have an alternative motion.
Okay. In that case, Commissioners, we are in need of an alternative motion for Z-2201. Is there a motion?
I would like to make a motion to deny Z-2201.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion and a second to deny Z-2201. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
No.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
This item is denied by a vote of six to one. No, five to one.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Madam Secretary, let's move...
Hold on. She said...
I was not agreeing with the motion.
So your vote then would be no, as opposed to yes?
Right.
So it's...
So it's denied by a vote of four to two.
Okay, so the motion fails.
Still denied.
Is denied by a vote of four to two. Moving on, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next item. UP-2207 Churchland, Dominique Neely, request a use permit for a banquet hall. Just give me one moment. I'm going to let them go. Okay. UP-2207 Churchland, Dominique Neely, request a use permit for a banquet hall at 5760 Churchland Boulevard. The property is zoned general mixed-use GMU and is further described as Tax Map 808, Parcel 1. The Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan's future land use map recommends commercial development for the property. The staff coordinator is Stacy Porter. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
We're doing fine, thank you. How you doing?
Okay. My name is Ms. Lee Neely, and this is my son, Dominique Neely, so I'm going to speak on behalf of the Black Room. We're asking for a permit for this event hall. The event hall will, is at 5760 Churchland Boulevard in the Churchland Shopping Center. The use of the venue hall will be, customers will be able to rent out the venue hall for graduation parties, retirement parties, birthday parties. I'm working with some things now that I want to do financial literacy for kids at the building. So there's different uses that people could rent it out for. We're trying to, we definitely stand away from youth parties. We don't want teenage parties there. It's an upscale venue hall. I'm nervous, so just kind of... The building is a 3,600-square-foot building, comes with two bathrooms, a kitchenette, which includes a, a commercial sink, a commercial refrigerator, two stainless steel tables, a microwave, and ice maker. We're also looking to make the venue available for banquets for the Little League in Portsmouth. And we're just asking that you approve this use permit for this venue.
Thank you, Ms. Neely. Commissioners, are there any additional questions of Ms. Neely?
Yeah, I have one. Hi, Ms. Neely. You did a great job. I just had some questions. You said that you would be doing maybe some computer classes or something? I want to do financial, to teach kids finance, because a lot of kids don't know finances. So I've been speaking with one of my friends, she's a real estate attorney, and she's going to come in and teach financial classes to teenagers. So I kind of, you know, kids really don't know finances these days, and I teach my finance. So I want others to know finance. I have three kids, he's 23, I have a son that's 24, that's going to graduate on Monday, have a 26-year-old that's in the Navy, so I have good kids. And I want others to be the same way. So that'd be all out of my pocket. It won't be anything that's being charged for, parents won't be charged for, I just want kids to know finance.
Okay. Just check, just keep in mind with the Planning Department that that may put you over into a different use. I would just check with them with anything other than what you've told us. So just check with them on that. But not a daycare or anything, or anything, okay?
Just my daycare.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no problem.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions? Commissioners, are there any additional questions of Ms. Neely?
Yes, Sharon, I have one. Would there be any, is there a kitchen on site?
No, it's a kitchenette.
So there would be no cooking or anything?
No cooking. They would have a caterer.
But are they able to prep there?
No.
Okay.
Everything would have to be catered.
Okay.
Any additional questions, Ms. Neely?
Yes. Your certificate of occupancy, have you been able to get that taken care of as far as how many people you can have on site?
Well, they said it's 369 standing.
Okay.
One, 362 standing, 169 sitting down.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any additional questions, Ms. Neely? Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-22-07. I have no registered speakers. If there's someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. You can come up, sir.
I just have a question.
You have to come up to the podium, please.
Hi, Council, I'm Dr. Negri. I have a building across the street. I just want to see an overhead, because I'm familiar with the parking lot and all the businesses there, I want to see where their business is going to be. So it's the back corner, doesn't it feel like a Chinese restaurant on the left?
It's the opposite end of the food line.
Okay, one of the tenants is H&R Block beside it?
The Internal Affairs is right beside it.
So the red spot is you, and this is an H&R Block, so you're in the very back corner left?
Yes, the Internal Affairs is right beside it.
Okay, I was just curious where it was, and if they're going to have enough parking and what kind of events were going to take place. That's all. Thanks, Council.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary.
Is there anyone else here who did not get an opportunity to register that would like to address this application? Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, the chair is in need of a motion for UP-22-07.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Page. I make a motion for the approval of UP-27, excuse me, UP-22-07 with conditions.
For approval. For approval, yeah. Because I don't believe this one came with conditions. Is that right, Ms. Chop? 07 came with conditions?
Yeah.
Okay.
All the use permits have proposed conditions.
Then the chair is in need of a second for UP. We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion and second to approve with conditions UP-22-07. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of six to zero with conditions. Our next item, UP-22-08, Uptown. Brian K. Johnson requests a use permit for an event space banquet hall on approximately 0.318 acres of land located at 2115 High Street in the neighborhood mixed-use NMU zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as a mixed-use corridor. The property is owned by Bountiful Blessings Daycare LLC and is identified as Tax Map 171, Parcel 16. The staff coordinator is Julie Chop. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Brian Johnson. My building is 2115 High Street. It's about 3,400 square feet. We have about, we have two, men's bathroom, women's bathroom, and a unisex bathroom as well. The proposed plan for the building is, in our offices, we also, I'm a, I'm a music producer, and we have a music studio. We also have production and a media movie studio. We do movies and videos as well. So in our offices, that will be, that will be our main operation in the offices, but on the outside of the offices, there's a large event space, just open space, and we wanted to, like, be able to maybe rent it out for, like, you know, birthday parties, grown-up birthday parties, of course, birthday parties, and maybe wedding recitals, not recitals, y'all know what I mean, wedding, what's it called?
Reception.
Receptions, receptions and all of that type of stuff, baby showers and things of that nature. And a lot of, I have some nonprofits as well coming, coming into play, and I want to get into stuff like car shows and, and all outside events, you know, youth, youth and community events, because I do a lot of that, turkey giveaways for Thanksgiving, bike giveaways for Christmas, back-to-school giveaways, things of that nature, as well as something like a, like a resource center. We don't just produce music, we also have youth that we train to produce and, and record and do videos and all that. We have about, I know I have about, in other facilities, we have about six people, young people that we train in. Actually, one of the movies that we just done, a 12-year-old kid is actually recording the movie, and we want to do a lot of things like that. And I just, I just hope that's something that, you know, will interest y'all as well.
Commissioners, are there any questions?
I have a question. I know you talked about car shows. I know recently we've been having the streets.
No, not that kind, no, sir.
Okay.
I already know where you're going.
Oh, okay.
Because it actually happens right beside my building.
Correct.
That's not us at all.
Okay.
The car shows, I'm talking about these nice cars parked in the park. We got our own private parking lot of about 28 spaces. You know, we get a few cars in there, just, you know, invite the kids and young people, people, you know, just like community stuff, no, but not, not no crazy Fast and Furious stuff, that ain't, that's not us. I already know where you was going.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Could you talk about the noise level?
There won't be a lot of noise. We have soundproof doors and windows, first of all, we have that. But even inside the building, there will not, there will be noise within the building, because like I said, we do artists, so we would have also, like, performing arts shows, like, listening parties for the artists that we produce and everything like that. But it won't, I promise, it won't be real loud. You won't hear pretty much anything outside.
How would you be able to protect your investments as far as equipment and the safety of your employees?
I have security alarms on the building, I have cameras all over the building, inside and out already, you know what I mean? So anything that's going on there will be recorded.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions?
Were there any comments from your surrounding neighbors or businesses or anything?
Oh, I'm, I'm actually surrounded by churches. I talk to them quite often, they're, they're pretty, pretty good people, they know, they know what I'm, what I'm about. I think they met my parents with the daycare situation when we were trying to do the daycare and everything. I pretty much, I'm, I'm there to help, you know what I mean? And I assist them, you know what I mean? So they, they pretty, from what, the people I talk to are both churches, they, from what I understand, they all right with me. Yes, sir. In the operation.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you, sir.
I have one.
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
For those that may not know, what is a hookah lounge? Because I believe that was mentioned.
It's like a vape lounge. It's not like, it's not like cigarette smoke, cigar smoke, it's not weed smoke, it's the little, you know, the electronic things, whatever, like, you just breathe and smoke, that's, that's it. That's it. No, no, no tobacco, no, no weed, none of that, just, just vape, vape lounge.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions? If there are none, the chair is in need of a motion for you.
Still going to open the floor here.
Okay. It's been a long afternoon.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-22-08. I have no registered speakers. If there's someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
So all I can say is somebody heard my plea. Commissioners, the chair is in need of a motion for UP-22-08 with conditions.
Chairman, Commissioner Curry, I make a motion to approve UP-22-08 with conditions.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion and second to approve UP-22-08. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of six to zero with conditions.
Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, is there any further business we need to discuss today? Mr. Baldwin, do you have any further business?
No, sir.
That being said, this meeting is now adjourned.